I call over our regular work session in the morning commissioners of December ninth, two thousand and nineteen, three o'clock P.M. Give it a roll call, vote a commissioner, beginning with Commissioner Putin.
President.
Commissioner Hudson.
President.
Commissioner Barnes.
President.
Commissioner Carr.
President.
And the chair is present. That the record show, Mr. Manager, that all of the mixed on board accounted for. Let's stand for the invocation that I'll do and Commissioner Bennett will ask him to do the pledge. Father of heaven, yes, thank you all God for another day, Lord, a beautiful day, a beautiful season, Lord, a day that you have given us, Lord. Y'all we thank you for an opportunity to be here, Lord, most of all discussing business of our community. Y'all we thank you for it. We thank you for each person that's read and said here today, or wherever they travel from, far a year, Lord, we just ask you to be family, travel back home, give a travel of mercies. We ask you to bless our employees, Lord, keep them safe, Lord. We have wonderful employees, does a wonderful job for our community. Y'all we thank you for it. We thank you for everything that you do for us in this government, Lord, and we honor you right now. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join, join the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of no other, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, Jeff, for a good little prayer. We appreciate you coming. And we're gonna start off with, I've got two folks that want to sign up and speak. It is Mary Barnes. Come up to the podiums, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mary Barnes, eighteen oh nine Stripton Street, Waycross, Georgia. And I'd like to find out, I've had several people in Ware County, working people asking me about, see if we can't get the time change, meeting time change, from three o'clock till like five thirty or six o'clock in the afternoon, so they can come to the meetings. They can't get off at three or four o'clock in the evening. So I've had several ask me to come and speak and see if they can't get the time change.
Okay?
Okay.
Commissioner, do you have any comments? Sir? Any of you got any comments?
Well, I think that's a valid request, really, because we represent the people, and if the people can't get off of work and come to their meetings, this is the people's meeting, it's not our meeting. And we need to make it available for the people.
I agree.
And I'm strongly in favor of doing just that, make it convenient for the working men to be here.
That's right.
Any questions?
I agree with Commissioner Carr, I think it needs to be changed later in the day or so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We will consider it a process, I'll have to meet.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll tell.
All right, Mr. Dean Cook. Want to speak to us about homeless, state your name and address for the record, Mr. Dean?
This is Dean Cook, I live at six oh two Living Drive in the county of Ware, city of Waycross. I'm speaking on behalf of the homeless. We have too many chronic homeless. I'm not talking about the beggars that are on the corners, but there are little signs asking for help. I'm talking about the people who literally have nothing, no place to go, and no help from the county or anybody else. They're unable to adapt to the regulations of the Sweetwater Baptist Church or the Salvation Army, which leaves them nothing in Ware County, that I'm aware of. And I think it's something that we should be ashamed of, especially at this time of year, that we allow people who cannot readily adapt to rules under normal situations. Something has to be done to protect these people. Granted, right now, our weather hasn't been that bad, but we could get some freezes. And where these people are sleeping, basically in a sleeping bag with a, one that I know of has a small generator which gives him a little heat of a portable heater, and that's all he has. It's just something I think should be looked into by the county to take care of these people, because I don't know if any of them are disabled veterans who are unable to cope with the VA system or anything else, but something needs to be done to take care of these people. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dean, for coming. That's something we'll just have to look into and do some research, that's all. Any comments? Something that has to look into and see, see if there's anything that can be done. County will go with, for our government. Anybody else?
We found out, you know, in the, in the exchange club meeting last Thursday, the regional commission has some input to helping people like that. And probably we didn't, maybe Mr. Manager would be able to check into that to see just to what extent that the regional commission could get into that to assist the people in this county that is homeless.
Do you have any opinions of that, Mr. Manager?
I can touch base with him and find out what services or programs they have.
Kimberly, I can't think of the lady's last name, Kimberly Zoff.
Hoppers. Kimberly Hoppers.
Yeah, I'll touch base with her.
Any more questions, Commissioner? All right. Thank y'all for coming and speaking. Agenda items, airport hangar lease, excuse me.
Yes, sir. Under tab A is airport hangar lease, which I believe that's pronounced, which to LLC out of Phantom Beach, to lease airport hangar eight four, at one seventy-five per month.
Call I seen Bill Strickland here, Airport Manager. Come up to the podium, Mr. Penfield, I've got a question for you. It's not about this lease, but it's related. How many of those hangers was tied with equipment, fire equipment, whatever else is out there that shouldn't be there? I know you called a month ago and needed those, those hangers, because we had airplanes out there that needed space.
Well, the Sheriff's Department still has the one, they entered one of them out, so I've got, they still got one.
Okay.
Fire Department EMS has two of them.
Talk into the mic.
Okay. Fire Department has two of them, well, Fire Department EMS, and one we've got the grill in with a bunch of generators and stuff. And they're still in that old abandoned plane that we've never got rid of, that we need to terminate in order to get rid of it, because the guy ain't coming back to get it. And just taking up the space, and right now, I can't, we got one in there, we need to get out of there.
Yeah, with the manager and our, he'll get without coming, but we can get rid of it.
But three of them are being occupied by, you know, different departments.
How long they been in there?
They got abandoned one?
Well, no, all the equipment.
Six thousand.
It's been in there for over, over two or three years.
Now, six thousand, three hundred dollars a year, we lose it on that three hangers because they full of somebody else's stuff. That's the poor one.
And that grill that we have, you know, they don't have it on wheels, so it's had to put it in the hanger, so we, you know, keep it safe.
Oh, yeah.
And so this one there with a bunch of generators and stuff, but the other one's got a bunch of trailers for EMS and stuff like that, or emergency management, they have trailers there. Other than that, I got another gentleman called today, thinking about leasing another hangar for us, too. Another one for one seventy-five a month, so we might have another look at it.
I know we spent as much tax money to build those hangers to get that airport self-supporting. You can't self-support it whenever you've got hangers full of everybody else's stuff, where you can't lease them, offset that income. That's the poor one, I mean. All right. Please, put that on the agenda, leave that on the agenda. Mr. Manager? Out of B, what we say to them, say?
Yes, sir. Under tab C, there's approval of the employee, excuse me, employee safety incentive pay for employees. The county has set this at one hundred and twenty-five dollars for full-time employees to sixty-five dollars for part-time employees. And this is from our workers' comp reimbursement fund that comes back, all from state.
That's good, employees, be safe on the job, save us money, and we passing the money back to them for doing their job. Especially y'all okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Put that on the agenda, Mr. Manager. Out of C, Hatch Point Road.
Okay. Under tab C is request for approval for a change order with the Hatch Point Road widening project. It is with East Coast Asphalt to pave Cactus Street, which is the street there behind Walmart, the dirt street there. If you'll notice in your packet, there is an estimate, I believe, that T.R. Long has created, and shows the engineering estimate of about two hundred and thirty-one thousand in this contract with East Coast Asphalt.
This corrects the drainage problem also back there?
Yes, sir, I believe it does, doesn't it, Brandon? Is it including the drainage on the spillway? Or does it not? It don't? It doesn't?
No, sir. No, sir, we need, we need to cross that property to sign Jesse Gies, into that five, the five twenty, right?
Drainage, yeah.
Yeah, so basically a veil there, but it's grew up, you can't see it, and it's on private property.
So I'm not sure if we have a drainage easement there or not.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Do you know, do you know drainage?
Yes, there is some drainage easement from the city's pond to the canal. I believe there's drainage easement there, but once we go down this, down Cactus and then turn between the houses, we don't have an easement there. We've got easement drawings set up, so that as we get right away, we get the easement.
Who owns that?
Stories, story property, permanent stories.
Right, we need to, we need to give an easement so we can open that drainage up where they go into five twenty, there under five twenty and the under railroad, and then on to the river. I mean, if you're gonna alleviate all flood, that's, that's what it's gonna take to get that water, go in that direction, is that correct?
Well, there's some problems with the city's retention pond behind Hobby Lobby.
So what we gonna do with that?
That had to be addressed either with the contractor, something like we're talking about with Cactus Street, or try to do something with the drainage crew, and address that in-house. They have a estimate of about sixty thousand dollars, if we try to do it with the contractor.
Open that, open that.
Repair, repair the overflow.
Oh, okay.
Behind Hobby Lobby.
Now, who owns that property? Is that blocks, is that private property?
I think it's the city's.
Where's that at? My hunting?
The retention pond belongs to the city, is that who it owns?
Pretty sure.
I believe, I'm pretty sure. Almost gonna be the city's responsibility.
I gotta get back and look and make sure I'm telling you right on ownership.
Yes, sir.
I need to get back and look and make sure I'm telling you right on ownership.
I know there's one part that's there, and I may be wrong, it's all about Walmart, because I know that we had to get permission one time to go in property and look at, I know I spent a few years.
The, the retention pond with the failed overflow shows as being owned by the city of Waycross.
Yeah. So we need to get them involved, too.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I'm in favor of doing this, Cass, but I, I want us to correct all of that drainage problem.
That's exactly right, we don't wanna create more problems.
That's right. And, and that's to be corrected all the way to the out, outlet end, under five twenty.
That's right.
So.
So I know I've been out there when there were Jesse Gies plays with it.
Part of the problem is.
On Webster's office door.
Yes, sir, part of the problem is this non-functioning overflow structure, it's not retaining water like it was originally designed to, that's contributing to. And then with this on Cactus Street, we're replacing that high sunder Cactus Tree, and we're increasing the size of it, that's gonna help with that, and Mr. Gies as well.
Yeah, we need to get the city involved and correct in that sense of something. I'm just asking.
Yes, sir, we'll have to have permission to go on their, their problem.
See if we can't get together on half and half project.
Have we approached Scott last year to look at this as a joint project, and they never gave an answer as to?
At the time when I approached the city, oh gosh, that's been a year and a half ago, they had it on their list, and said that they were gonna get to it, but I never heard anything after that.
That's why they had to do it before now. This street is on the list of projects to eliminate drainage, so I don't, I doubt the city will, is in a position to be part of it.
But we gonna pave this street, we need it where the waters won't stand on me, if we want to get done with it. That's gonna be, this is our three foot project.
That's right.
Was this street paved with the going back to Red Brook Highway, with the end by Jesse Gies?
The end, there by Jesse Gies.
Any more questions? On the agenda, the Cactus, Mr.? Out of D.
Okay, under tab D is a resurfacing contract change order with the resurfacing that we did, or just initiated just not too long ago in the Simwell Springs area. This is a change order for the leveling, and I believe it was also patching to, Brandon, sir, of Seminole Springs. Once they got out there and started working on it, they realized that that street needed to be re, excuse me, needed to be leveled. And the amount there is eighty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighteen cents. That was included in the contingency line item of that contract. It's just to officially approve that, because we knew at that point that there might be additional work that needed to be done in that contract.
So it goes from a million to fifty thousand to a million and one hundred and thirty-six?
Thirty-six thousand, yes, sir. There was a decrease in there, too, so the debt difference was eighty-six.
Does the change order request cover the whole contract, or just is it one or two streets?
The whole contract, yes, sir. It makes for a better road, I did.
Right, right. That's better road.
All okay with that, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, put that on the agenda. All right.
Okay, under tab E is request for reappointment to the Tax Assessor's Board for post three. Mr. Daryl Robertson submitted a letter of request to be reappointed back to this post, post three.
I got no problem with that, now, you serve the least.
Somebody who's this interested in serving and has done a good job, I'd remember for form.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, Mr. Manager? Out of A. This lady's in another tree.
Okay, under tab F is request for budget amendment for the probate court budget. As a preface, we, basically, at the time that we were trying to balance the budget for this fiscal year, we, we removed eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars from the probate court for a part-time position that at that time wasn't filled. And so that was, that was the strategy we used, actually, to get to where we were, and it was removed, and Judge Bennett's requesting to have that money replaced back in his budget there for a part-time person.
We got the funds, the code, haven't we?
Well, we will have to, to look for those funds, we might have to move it.
Mr. President, we need to, did he appear to explain his leads to us?
Oh, there he is, I thought he left, I'm sorry.
This position is one that I've had on my budget for a number of years, and we use it for emergency position to fill. We had one of our workers out for a couple months, a couple years ago, and we had to fill her position with a part-time helper. That position, that helper is still on the books, but we never terminated her, but, and so the position is still filled as far as that. But we're, what we're doing is we're changing that designation on that money, where I've made Tanya Harper my associate judge, and there's a pay adjustment on that part. Y'all voted that in back home a couple months ago, and, but we're called with the funds, not in the budget, and at that time, I did not know the funds were not in the budget, so that had been called. So that's where the thing is coming in, bringing it up to where the position that she's holding as associate judge already, it would be funded.
Judge, did you, did you not prepare the budget?
Oh, yes, but that was.
And you didn't know that the money was?
I asked about that part, because it was not showing on my budget printout, and they said it was still there, but it had, this was not printed out on the budget, but so I thought it was there. And I talked to Scott about it, and as far as he knew at that time, it was still there. And so when we did the.
How much money are we talking about?
Oh, right at twelve thousand, eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
What's the population rate there for the judge, D.A., associate judge?
There is not. They're pushing for all the judges that have a population of, you know, twenty thousand or more, to have associate judges to fill in when they're not available to hold court. And so that's what they're, the probate council at the last two or three sessions have been promoting associate judges, and a lot of, I'd say, probably sixty percent or more of the judges have associate judges at this town, so fill in. They can fill in at any time, they have the, can hold court just like I can, and step in and fill in if I'm out for some reason, or they could go to another court and hold court for another judge that is, you know, out for some reason. And I have also held court for numerous judges, probably, at all different places, so to fill in for judges. They say if that does happen, does that be a disappallative pay for her? Or does that be a disappallative? Oh, yes, they would, they would pay her for that day. Oh, for me, if I go out like that, but of course, I have not charged on anything like that when I hold court for another judge, but. They're not for some reason. Yeah, I have to reclusive himself, whatever. Okay, what's y'all's pleasure?
Well, Scott, I don't think you ever finished about the, about the numbers of the budget. The funding?
Oh, as far as the funding, we'd have to find it. I don't know that, I don't, I don't know if everybody's ever located it, we'd have to find it, we had to pull them somewhere else, basically.
I think we take it to the budget, get back to the next year.
I don't know if it's that long, but. Well, we, we actually, we usually mid-year, first of January, we do a reassessment on the budget to see how we are mid-year.
Let us look at it after January. That's what I'm asking.
First, yeah.
Yeah, this is a part that I was in my budget for a number of years that I was not using, and then when I finally had to use it, then this time it was not there. Have you already gave her a reason? Yeah. I've already approved it. Now, she's not drawing any extra money at this time, she's drawing her regular salary. But she is still doing the duties of an associate. Let, let the manager will. Okay, he'll appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item G, Mr. Manager?
Under tab G is a request to approve a license, alcohol consumption license on premises at nineteen ninety-seven State Street, which is Joe's Place Bar, the original owner has repurchased the operation, and basically, this is a request to change the license back to his name. So just the name change, basically, yeah. He only at one time sold it, now he's buying it back.
Anybody got a problem?
That's the location, that's the engineered equipment on the side of that.
Yeah. That's near the corner of Ware.
Yes, sir.
Right near side of engineered equipment.
Yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Did the sheriff go on with that?
Well, he meets all of, he, he meets all of, he just, this system ain't changed. Honor him. He meets all the requirements. Okay, item H.
Okay, under tab H is request to purchase ambulance power, power load upgrades for three of our trucks. This will be purchased out of our SPOS account. It's three retrofitted power lifts for the ambulances at the price of seventy-nine thousand, sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. We have one truck that has the units in it, and we have the other three that we will need to have retrofitted.
Not a bill, not a bill.
One of the three is already fixed.
Yes, I don't want to just, Dr. Bill Parrott, couldn't I? He explains, so everybody will know what we're doing and what we're saving exists. Workers' comp, so that's it.
Yeah, these are devices that eliminate any lifting of the patient into the back of the ambulance, or unloading it, it loads in and unloads automatically. We did get our first unit with the last new purchase, and it's working beautifully, taking a lot off the crews. And I don't have an exact figure of what we're saving in workers' comp, but it will be substantial. We've had, we've had three significant injuries, loading and unloaded, and even one involved with a patient, which this does eliminate any dropping of a patient, and also ensures patients won't be discharged during a crash, so it one hundred percent guarantees that, so. I mean, I think the one workers' comp injury cost us at least a hundred and twenty thousand or so, biceps tendon about rupture, patient situation not resolved, but I, it has to be significant, savings and safety improvement to the crew of that patient, so.
A lot more these cost.
I'm sorry?
I said those losses, that work, and medical bills.
Yes, sir.
It's a lot less than what these cost, a lot more.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. You all okay with it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Put it on the agenda. Thank you, Dr. Bill.
Okay, under tab I is a request approval of a Georgia Power relocation agreement for utility relocation on Cypress Street. The amount of this work is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. This is an agreement we have to have in place for them to relocate the utilities on Cypress. We have been searching high and low to try to find out if Georgia Power has prior rights to that area. So far, we've been unsuccessful in finding any documentation. Georgia Power's asking us for a deed. We've only been able to find it for one parcel, one part of that street. And so from what they've told us is that they're asking for the agreement to be approved.
Uh, and so from what they've told us is that they're asking for the agreement to be approved that will allow them to go out and start doing the utilities and then we'll figure out who was there first, so to speak. We're trying to do some research and, uh, deep, deep searches and such, but, um, that's the situation we're under with Cypress. I know that street's been there for, forever today, so to speak, so, I mean, it is what it is, but we're still in that, trying to find out who was there first, so to speak, situation.
Okay, so they just kind of stand still until we find out that we're.
Well, we're not, no, sir, it's, they're saying that we have to approve the agreement, uh, and they will go ahead and initiate work and get the utilities, because we'll have to move them to get the street there. Uh, and then we'll settle up, so to speak, on the back end. We'll figure out who was there first and so forth. Uh, I've had our attorney's office to do a, uh, title search to see what they could find. They've only, only been able to find that one area, that one parcel where there was a deed for that section. Uh, so that's the situation we're under. You know, that's, I think part of that was the old rail bed of Cypress Company way back then.
That's right.
Probably some access road that was there that ran along the tracks and that's why they converted into the street when they took the tracks out. So, you know, that was at the turn of the century and I, I don't think Georgia Power's been there since nineteen hundred. I don't know.
It wasn't no Georgia Power.
That's what we're trying to make, so we have a map.
That's what happened back then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a map from nineteen fourteen that shows the street.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, and it's named Cypress Street, so, uh, hard to disagree with the map from nineteen fourteen.
We need, we need to move.
So if we're.
In the industry. Uh, for us, we need to move forward.
Absolutely.
If we approve the agreement, the total cost, final cost won't exceed two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the, that's the cost that they're saying that we would have to pay if they had prior rights.
And they'll move them.
And they'll move them.
They have a contractor.
Right, yeah, basically, they said they won't go out there and they won't touch anything until the agreement's approved and then we'll settle up afterward when we find out that we did have prior rights.
Is there any projection on the total cost of that whole project?
Uh, not quite on hand, I think it's pushing about one point five billion, I think. Am I right?
Certainly not.
Roughly about one point five.
At this point.
At this point. And that's include, is that including this amount, the three hundred thousand alcohol freedom?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, about, about one point five, indeed.
Well, that's gonna be needed if it's going to stay there with the size to, to do the overpass on State Street. That'd take three or four years.
That'd be the detour.
That's the detour, that's right.
And we got to build it heavy enough to hold, carry eighty thousand pound trucks.
Yeah.
Alright, Comerces, y'all okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Manager.
Okay, uh, under tab J, uh, is, uh, requests for a bid award for the ESC storage building. We advertised for bids on construction of the building, into, uh, cruise engineering accepted four bids on the twenty-ninth. And the lowest bid was Chuck Smith and Sons Construction at a bid price of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. We put this on the agenda for a bid award and to see if the commission wanted to move forward on this because of the, uh, the failure of the SPOS vote, we were gonna pull this money from SPOS, that's really the only place to get it, uh, from a public facilities line item. Uh, we have about one point three million budgeted into that line item from the two thousand and fourteen SPOS and so this would come out of that line item. So now that every time something's, because of those funds are very now, pretty much limited now, everything that comes up, we'll bring to the commission to see if there's, an agreement to move forward to use that money out of SPOS.
Mr. Chairman, can I say?
Well, let's meet it. Yeah.
As you know, we, um, county, under supervision of our engineer, built our back cages. And we say, um, based on estimates, go over a hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Wallace and I looked at using the same concept, building this building. Um, he's got, we've got some initial figures and can probably save another a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand of this building.
The same deal?
To get us, this building, it would need.
We should have been talking about that since we did this.
Well, we, Brandon gave the same supplier, the same vendor for the vacuum cage, the material, same design, and they, um, they've come up with this.
Not for that.
I would, I would like to see permission given to our engineer and manager to pursue that and then come back with a, a hard proposal.
Sounds good, the dream. If we get the building there and get this maiden plus dollar worth of equipment out of weather.
Basically, we just need dry storage.
Yes, sir. Dry storage, it don't need to be nothing, the full roll-up doors, whether the full, the fifth one would be, would have a little product because of storage. The ambulance service has got files and equipment. We've got three hangers full, plus all that is sitting out all over the place, got open equipment, road chalk, big generator sitting out the weather. And that's, 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 that, that just don't need to happen.
Also, also, could we, could we have the department's fire EMS or whoever generate a detailed inventory list of what's there and where it came from, when it's used? And see if any of it could be sent back or, or abused in it and so we'll know what's going, so we'll know what we got.
We, we getting.
I think anybody knows what we got.
We gotta have a hundred, six thousand dollars coming out. We shouldn't have ever accepted that. And we gotta work that, brand new stuff.
Since we're gonna build a building, let's get a handle on what we got and then go from there. That's my recommendation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Manager.
Motion I want.
Get, get the, get the, the department heads, ambulance service director, fire chief, whoever else has got equipment in those hangers and equipment that's sitting out, we did, you did a list and a dollar back there. I think it's gonna shock the master folks. Alright, Comerces, y'all okay with that?
Alright, I have one question also for the attorney.
I'm in favor of us, if we got airport hangers out there, that they serve as airport hanger.
That's right.
This equipment that we got stored out in there, evidently it is not being used. And if it's not being used, we need to clear the surplus, let the county managers have it.
No, I don't know that. I don't know what the chief's got, I don't know what EMS director got, the EMA people, I don't know what all we got.
You don't have anything at the airport.
Oh, you don't have any? I thought you said you had something there. EMA, EMA has and the fire has, that's right, okay.
The attorneys who built the back cage, they approved that process, so Brandon would need to work with Jennifer and get it. And if we reach that point and if we go that way, then we go there.
Hey, if we can build the same buildings for a hundred thousand dollars less, we should have been talking about that start.
But I have my question, I want to make sure, I mean, I'm in the right there because we've been out the bids and all, some of y'all. I want to make sure that we, you know, reject these and we do a how, the attorney said we can be done.
Well, I'm more reject, I mean, that's, that's your, your part of yourself.
Right. I, I mean, I think if, if it's to consist of the board that you are gonna move forward and do it internally, I think the proper procedure would be to reject all the bids you got. Um, and then look into, uh, you know, how much the estimated materials are gonna cost, whether those are gonna rise to the level that we need to bid those. Um, it doesn't sound like they will, but maybe they will, and then we'll look at that process separately apart from these.
All right.
Brandon, does this include, that include the four or two bid?
Yes, sir.
Turnkey job?
Yes, sir.
But if we get it built, same turnkey job for a hundred thousand dollars less, then we need to do it.
Basically, the county would be acting as the general contractor. We would have a contract, a contractor for the concrete, a contractor for red steel building, a contractor to do electrical.
That's what we're gonna do.
I'd be having to manage the whole thing.
Mr. Manager, put us on the agenda to reject these bids and. And, Mr. Chairman, Comerces, y'all okay with that? Okay. Alright.
Absolutely. Uh, but, or, is the county manager made aware every time of people storing stuff in these buildings out there?
No, because things are moving real, but there's, there's been some stuff out there, I think, since before I even started, that's been stored.
Yes.
I think, I'm, I'm not sure, I think our department actually got some stuff out that was not over needed or even.
What I'm getting at, Mr. Manager, I, you can't rent a hanger if it's, if it's full.
That's right.
And, uh, you're the one supposed to be renting them, so.
No, the airport is.
Airport manager. But anyway, uh, any of that stuff that's surplus, I think you ought to have the authority to declare it as surplus and sell it to the government, uh, whatever. That's a money maker.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll get a list if there's anything that's not needed or not used or obsolete and bring it to the commission.
Right. The only thing I don't want to ever declare surplus is that one old fire engine we got out of this, first one we ever had.
That's right.
I don't want us to throw it away.
I have to go back using it again one day.
That's right. I had to keep it here to keep it from getting scrapped here to get it for my calls, uh, officials. That's worthless. Nothing they ever said. Okay. Comerces, items.
All right, there, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing except those hour changes, I'd like to see us do that, so. I'd like for that to be on our agenda, which will be bad on you to do that.
Well, I think I said we'd take that. Alright, uh, county manager.
I don't have anything.
Okay, county attorney, Melvin.
I don't have anything, that's true.
Alright, under tab, motion to adjutant, what's that?
Second.
Post my second all favorable, I say hi.
Hi.
Hi. We're running five o'clock.